All right, good evening and welcome, everyone. Before we can begin our proceedings this evening, I'd like to highlight our safety protocols and expectations. If you are fully vaccinated, you do not need to wear a mask on the grounds of the Franklin Campus Administration Building here. Individuals who are not fully vaccinated, we are asking you to please wear a mask. Public comment cards and meeting agendas are located on the tables within the board chambers at both entrances. And once you fill out a comment card, please submit this in the drop box next to the comment cards. Our board assistants will collect those when I call for public comment and deliver them to our Board Secretary, Ms. Lewis. When it's time for public comment, I will call on each individual one at a time to address the Board at our presentation table on behalf of our Superintendent, Dr. Lidrian Roby, and the Board of Education. Thank you for being here in attendance with us. With that, I will call this meeting of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education to order. This evening is Monday, August 2. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Flores?
Present.
Ms. Grant?
Present.
Ms. Lewis is here. Reverend Mathias?
Present.
Mr. Ross?
Present.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
Dr. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
President Shatky?
Here. We have a...
Thank you very much.
Quorum. Quorum.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval of this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, we do not have any celebrations this evening. Do we have public comment for Board Agenda items?
Ms. Bowens?
Not on the agenda. So forward later, okay, perfect. So no public comment for Board Agenda items. We'll move into our reports this evening. Ms. Lewis, the secretary's report, please.
There is only one meeting on Wednesday, August 4th, at 5:30 p.m. here at Franklin Campus, and that is the Academic Achievement Committee. And this is a time adjustment, so it is at 5:30 p.m. at Franklin Campus.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to our Committee Chair updates. The first is our City Board, excuse me, Liaison Committee. I have the pleasure of co-chairing, excuse me, co-chairing that committee with Mayor Bliss. And we met, one second, excuse me. We met just a few weeks ago to talk about a number of things, but the primary part of our dialogue that afternoon was really about both sets of budgets and the additional stimulus funding that we've received as units of government. And so it was great for us to be able to share kind of what our priority areas are, what our focuses are. We shared our comprehensive proposed budget and spending for the Esser dollars with the city. And we really ultimately looked for ways in which we might be able to partner on some meaningful work that'll impact the students and children of the City of Grand Rapids. So that took up most of the time of our conversation. We also got a brief update on the director search for our community's children, which is a partnership between Grand Rapids Public Schools and the City of Grand Rapids. They are nearing the end of that search in the final interview stage, I believe, so hopefully we'll hear more soon on who the new director will be in that office. And yeah, I think that was about, about what we talked about at that meeting. Dr. Baker or Mr. Ross, anything to add about the City Board Liaison Committee meeting?
Just that the, there was an update from our strategic planning, which was really great to have that update at the same time that we had the discussion about the two pots of federal funding and just the sense that there's, there needs to be shared solutions to problems facing families. And, and it was really nice to be able to connect those two in a, in a stronger way than it's been typical because we're both trying to solve problems with families. So I appreciated that.
Great, great comment.
No, don't think I has any much I can really add. Well, thank you.
Very good, all right. Next is our Finance Committee update. Reverend Mathias?
Yeah, tonight we'll be presenting some purchasing agenda items as well as some amendments. So Larry will come up and do that at that time.
Very good. Thank you, Reverend Mathias. We will move forward to our Superintendent's report. Dr. Roby?
Good evening, everyone. We have, we're getting ready for the start of school. And as you may or may not know, today was the first day with our principals being back in their buildings for the opening of the 21-22 school year. We will be meeting with them later this week for our first professional development experience and then also setting the stage for our first district-wide professional development experience around our equity journey and our equity walk. We've been having lots of conversations about that. The academic plan will be shared with our Academic Achievement Committee later this week, and then we'll do a summary version of that later in the month before the start of the school year. I am pleased to introduce our Grow 1000 intern. Many of you are aware that we had a, in partnership with the city, we had an intern this summer, and her name is Ayana Irvin. She is a junior, rising junior at U Prep. And one of the things that we have done with her is to provide different experiences for her across our organization. She's had an opportunity to kind of see the things that go on in the summertime for district office staff, the things that we do during summer school, all the work that we do to get prepped for our school year. And some of the experiences, I hope that I've convinced her to kind of pursue education as a career pathway, but if not, I know that she has other aspirations and we will certainly continue to support her. Ayana, do you mind just coming forward and introducing yourself and talking a little bit about your experience?
Can I go up there?
Yes. Yes.
As she comes up, I, I had the opportunity to meet her. I was in the office one day and it was, it was delightful.
Well, as you guys know, I'm Ayana. I'm going to be going into 11th grade this year, and I go to U Prep. And I do want to be into the nursing field, but working in the district is pretty cool. But yeah.
And we've done, I mean, you can talk about some of those experiences. I want it to be your voice because I can just go on and on, but talk about some of the things that you've experienced this summer.
I experienced to meet a lot of nice people for this first job. I like to do things for people here, like all the projects I have to do and things like that. I liked, I love working here, honestly. Don't want to stop. And I learned like a lot about how the district runs and how school is set up and how summer school is set up. I learned a lot, honestly, and it's pretty cool.
And one of the experiences, I think that is important as this is her first employment experience, is that she sees across her organization, she's attended meetings and has had an opportunity to see kind of how discussions have taken place. One of our aspiring building leaders was so kind to allow her to sit in and hear how the things that we discuss as part of the interview process. And again, it's all about teaching so that she could learn how decisions are made and the things that we do in the district. And it has been a joy to have her this, this summer.
It was a joy to be with you guys, too.
Thank you. Any questions for Board members before? All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Helmuth is going to come up and talk about our non-homestead millage update, and then that will conclude our reports for the evening.
All right, if I preview our "We're Back" campaign first?
Oh, absolutely.
I believe that is... Julie. All right. Madam Superintendent, Board President Shatky, members of the Board, just really excited to showcase tonight our new "We're Back" campaign. We have a new television and social media video that is running on cable. It's on network television. It's being boosted and promoted via social, on streaming, on Hulu, Netflix, a whole lot of other ways and means. This is part of a comprehensive "We're Back" campaign to really get the message out that we're back 100% in person. We want there to be no doubt that we're, we're back, and it's, and the intent is to generate that excitement. There's billboards, there are bus ads, there are, this video is also running in the Celebration Cinema Theaters in a couple different locations, and just so much more. There's a direct mail campaign. We have a door-to-door campaign that's going to be started up here in the next few days. So you're going to see a lot of activity and action here in the next, really, three, four weeks before the start of school. And so without further ado, I'm going to just, this is a 30-second ad. Grand Rapids Public Schools is back 100% in person for the 21-22 school year. With over 40 schools in one dynamic district, we are preparing kids for the real world. Get back to...
...ready! ...just like...
Come be a part of the energy, excitement, and momentum at Grand Rapids Public Schools. Enroll today at enroll.grps.org. All right, and I need to give a shout out to none other than Brett Atwood, who's up in the booth there. He's, is our videographer, yeah? So Brett pulled that off in about 24 hours, so, oops. Julie, I need your help again. We can just watch.
I can expect John run that meeting.
Oh, he just killed it? Okay, good. Nope. Yeah, it just automatically went to the next video. Now it's, now it's going into the audio system. That's all I have for the "We're Back." A little update, it is, is the eve of election. Tomorrow is Election Day, Tuesday, August 3. Where the one and only issue on the ballot is the GRPS non-homestead millage. Just as a reminder, this is not a new tax. This is, the 18 mills has been levied for three decades. This is not a property, a tax on homeowners, so this costs homeowners zero. This is a tax that's on non-homestead property, industrial, commercial, and other non-homestead. And it's not a tax increase because it can't be. It has been at the 18 mills. This simply protects against a headly rollback where, right now, we're under threat of a headly rollback because of the skyrocketing property values. Once you get over that 5%, it triggers the headly rollback, and that's one where if we don't have this approved, it could start costing about $250,000 annually due to the rollback. And so obviously, do that over time. You just mark that over 10 years, that's 10, $2.5 million that otherwise would be in the classrooms for teaching and learning. And so we're encouraging people to get out and vote, and that's all I've got.
Questions for Mr. Helmuth?
I did get the, the mailing, so that was, that was kind of cool.
That's good. The mailer was daily chase mailers to all the absentee voters all the way up until Friday. And then all the AVs who already voted, they didn't get a follow-up. We took all the likely super voters, and they also got a postcard they either hit on Saturday or today. So those who are going to show up at the polls are, should also have received that same mailer. And then we've also been taking those lists and through our social media firm, we're targeting that same image to, via social media and other means.
Excellent. Great work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helmuth.
Thank you.
All right, we've got two action items this evening, the purchasing agenda and the purchasing agenda addendum. Mr. Oberst, I think we'll welcome you forward for that.
Good evening, President Ms. Shatky and Board members, yes. Two action items, first being the purchasing agenda, which was presented to the Finance Committee on Monday, and as I explained to them, really some, some expenditures to get ready for the upcoming school year. On that particular purchasing agenda, there were no billing inside or bond expenditures. We also were in the process of getting some additional information that we knew was going to come late, so there's also a purchasing agenda addendum tonight that is new, was not available for the Finance Committee on Monday. The big thing on that was we've had issues with the steam system between us and Campus Elementary. We did a repair a couple of years ago, but it needs really to be replaced, and we were waiting on bits for that which we got in. And so that is on the addendum at a cost of $303,000. I believe in your pack, and there's some additional background information on the bid process and why we selected who we selected. And then I think, as you're probably aware, we, we extended our strategic planning process to include more meetings with constituent groups. The cost of that's about $23,250. Part of that will be picked up by a donation from the Grand Rapids Community Foundation. And then just a couple of the other smaller items that we needed to get in front of the Board and their approval, so we can get them ordered and get them in place and time for school to start here in about three weeks, I think, right? So that's, that's the nature of the addendum and the purchasing agenda itself.
All right, thank you, Mr. Oberst. Any questions?
Yeah, just, just the boiler system at campus that's coming out of the general fund and the...
No, it's coming out Esser dollars. Well, yeah, general fund via Esser money, so.
Okay, all right.
So I just, it's not bond dollars, let me put it that way.
Right, I remember, we discussed last at the Finance Committee that we try to keep track of what those expenses were.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thanks.
All right, may I please have a motion for approval of the purchasing agenda?
Motion to approve the purchasing agenda? Support.
Ms. Lewis, please call the roll.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
President Shatky?
Yes.
Thank you. May I please have a motion for approval of the purchasing agenda addendum?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Lewis, please call the roll.
Yes. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
President Shatky?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Oberst. Next agenda item is our consent agenda grouping. Is there any discussion or any questions? If not, may I have a motion for approval, please?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Support.
Ms. Lewis, please call the roll.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
President Shatky?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is a discussion item. Just a reminder to my colleagues that we will be at GRPS University this Wednesday from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. for our component of the district's professional development, so please make sure to mark that on your calendars and join us at GRPS University for that work this Wednesday. All right, we'll move into public comment this evening. Do you want to read public comment instructions? Then I'll call them up. Thank you.
If there is anyone present who is interested in giving public comment, we have two public comment sections on our agenda. The first one is public comment on Board Agenda items. Agendas are located by the comment cards, and the second opportunity is for commenting on non-agenda, on non-agenda items. If there is a matter that you would like to speak on, you will need to fill out the public comment card located on the tables at the entry point. Please submit your card in the bin by the cards. Our Board Assistant will collect them for submission. Individuals be invited one at a time to the speaker table to address the Board during the designated public comment agenda time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. You will need to state your full name before providing your comment. We will then start the timer at the beginning of your public comment time and provide you with a one-minute notice by flagging a red card indicating one minute remains. You will need to complete your comment time upon being notified that three minutes have passed. Board members do not respond to public comment. Concerns will be brought to the attention of the appropriate staff. We value your input and thank you for sharing with us.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lewis. All right, so it is my pleasure to invite up Mary Bowens, please. Yeah, you're doing great. Good to see you on the mend.
I got one of those shoes.
They're special. Way about 20 pounds. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Mary Bowens, President of GREA. Superintendent Roby, President Shatky, and Board members, I really wanted to come here tonight to talk about class size. When the district is in, looking at, to enroll students, I think it is to our advantage to focus on small class sizes because we all know that students can progress in extraordinary ways if they have individualized attention and a strong relationship with the people who are important to them. Imagine an algebra class with 20 students rather than 40, or a kinder student in a class of 20 instead of a K-1 split with 35 students. How much more could be accomplished with that scenario? But now I'm concerned that class size is not in the forefront as the staffing shortage has been made in the media. Teachers are concerned, rightly so, that our students will not have the advantage of a small class size, single grade levels, and a certified teacher invested in their academic progress. There just aren't enough of us in GRPS. Additionally, I refuse to use the words "learning loss" to describe what our students have experienced during a global pandemic. To paraphrase a post I saw on Facebook, "Can we agree not to use terms like 'learning loss' in front of the kids at least? Can we not start the upcoming school year telling them that they need to catch, that they need to catch up because they're behind?" Not starting the year that way. This deficit framing, I'm seeing, is hurting my soul. Let's begin the year telling our students they're survivors and capable because they were able to attend school despite a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic, despite the roadblocks that may have gotten in the way of traditional academic progress. But we are here to teach, learn, and let them shine. As professional educators, we take our students where they are and move them forward. That is what we're good at. Small class sizes would make it possible to do this more efficiently and with greater success. Let's do everything we can to give the teachers and the students the advantages of smaller class sizes, the freedom to do what is right for each student, and the ability to build those strong relationships that will affect positive change in our students. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to welcome up Kelly Hune, please. Kelly.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Hune. While GRPS works towards racial equity, please remember health equity. Help protect our community, including the minority of medically high-risk students and families who have felt ignored and all but forgotten throughout this pandemic. My daughter has suffered terribly from the social isolation of the last year and a half. She has said over and over again how lonely she is, sorry, and how much she misses school. She's been excited to get the vaccine so she will be safe and see her friends again. Like dozens of students in GRPS, she has a chronic illness that puts her at high risk. She is also one of the lucky ones who happens to be born before 2010, meaning she is old enough to be vaccinated while there are many other families whose children are not that lucky. Last year, we made the difficult decision to keep her, our daughter, virtual. As the virus is more understood and safety precautions have been utilized, we know she will benefit from being in school with her teachers, classmates, and friends, knowing that she will be protected and that she will be able to protect her friends and classmates who are not yet vaccinated. We know science is showing that there are only four steps needed to protect the public: wearing masks, washing hands, physical distancing, and vaccination. In our community of public schools, three out of the four of those simple steps are in your control. The Delta variant is 60% more transmissible than the primary virus, is twice as likely to cause hospitalizations, and is attacking children and adults equally. Please, for our students' health, for the safety of minority of students who have already suffered because of health challenges beyond their control, and for the majority of students who are not yet vaccinated for whatever reason, please require the three public health steps that science has proven keeps everyone safe: masks, washing hands, and physical distancing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, I'd like to welcome forward Alexa Adi.
Hi, good evening, welcome.
Hello. Okay, one moment here, a second. Okay. My name's Alexa Adi. Good evening. The last meeting that I, I was here two weeks ago, that was my first board meeting I attended, I came away feeling that you genuinely do care for our students at GRPS. Leading with that, today, the weather is beautiful in Grand Rapids. It was warm, sunny, not humid, it's perfect. It's not usual weather for August. When the kids start school on August 24th, it's going to be much hotter, much more humid, and my heart absolutely aches with the thought of sending my kids, my three students at Giar Montessori to the Fountain Building that does not have air conditioning, with poor ventilation, and the possibility of them having to wear masks. In that building, it gets easily up to 90 degrees in the classrooms on hot days. It is unhealthy and unsafe for our children. Per the GRPS bylaws 8450 Student Welfare, the Board and Superintendent will endeavor to provide a suitable environment conducive to the general health, safety, and welfare of each student in school attendance and at-school-sponsored activities. Wearing a mask at school in hot weather in an unconditioned, un-air-conditioned building is not conducive to students' health or safety. Per a National Institute of Health study, side effects of mask-wearing include, and are not limited to, hypoxia, shortness of breath, increased acidity and toxicity, activation of fear and stress response, rise in stress hormones, immunosuppression, fatigue, headaches, decline in cognitive performance, viral infectious illnesses, chronic stress, anxiety, and depression. Long-term consequences for face mask-wearing can cause health deterioration, developing and the progression of chronic diseases and premature death. I have more lists here. Forty-seven studies, most of them by the CDC and NIH, that demonstrate the ineffectiveness of cloth masks.
One minute.
And 32 in here show negative side effects. All of this decreases our children's ability to learn. All right. Most recent, Kent County information on their website, as of last week, nine total COVID cases in the hospitals, seven in the ICU. We are not at capacity, not even close. Children with, don't tend to get COVID, most kids. In the last year, since the pandemic, 340 kids have died from COVID in the U.S., and that is awful. 50,000, over 50,000 kids have died of other things during the same time period. Anxiety and depression in children have increased. Child and teen suicide has increased. In Michigan, zero kids have died of COVID. It's not a threat to the majority of children, so there's no reason that masks should be mandated for kids to have to wear. It should be a parent's choice and decision. All right, ma'am? Okay.
Thank you very much.
I don't know how that got going, but...
Thank you for your comments. All right, may I please welcome forward Rachel Hendricks. Rachel, welcome. And I see your note. Thank you for letting us know about that, so we can correct it, yes.
You can check your security cameras.
I believe it. I'm sorry for that.
Sorry. My name is Rachel Hendricks. Thank you for this chance to speak about the problems that are affecting GRPS parents and students this year. I understand that the school board is facing some tough decisions and would like to thank you for all the time you have given to this school district. Tonight, I'm going to be addressing two issues: lack of communication with parents and loss of focus on education. I have experience with children and education. I'm a parent of four, and I provide childcare for two to three others. Our family homeschooled for nine years, and it was definitely worth it. When my oldest was starting high school, I researched other options and found a theme school that seemed like a great fit for him, and so GRPS became our choice. I now work as a paraprofessional, teaching students to read. I hope this shows that I didn't get my opinions from Wikipedia and YouTube. I'm grateful that GRPS is committed to being in person this fall, but they haven't told parents what COVID-19 restrictions they will be using. Some of the restrictions last year affected students' health or interfered with education, and parents have concerns about those. When I contacted the district, I was repeatedly told to wait until next week, since they were waiting for the Health Department to tell them what to do. This strategy of delay and blame was unfair to parents who are considering other educational options. Private schools have financial aid deadlines, and some homeschool activities fill up in the summer. We considered those options, but since my son attends a theme school, unenrolling him would mean losing his spot, and we had a very positive experience with the school teachers and staff there. and staff there. I called the Kent County Health Department today. They are waiting for the State Health Department to tell them what to do based on the CDC's newest guidance, but the CDC is only making recommendations, not mandates. GRPS told me in a Facebook comment that the safety and well-being of our students, staff and all who engage with our district is our top priority in regards to COVID-19. I'd like to respond by reading the GRPS mission statement. Our mission is to ensure that all students are educated, self-directed and productive members of society. GRPS needs to decide if its top priority is trying to guarantee safety from a virus or if it will follow its mission to ensure educated students. COVID-19 is causing serious health problems for some people, but it continues to mutate internationally and return. That could happen indefinitely and students shouldn't have to wait until it's gone to receive an appropriate education. If they want to improve, GRPS could ask their families and teachers which restrictions were the most effective against COVID-19 and also interfered the least with education. GRPS board members, please tell parents how you will fulfill your mission this year. As a side note, if the Health Department later says otherwise, hopefully parents will complain to them instead of to you.
Thank you very much. All right, our last comment this evening will come from Chris Woods. Welcome, Chris. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Board President Shaki and Superintendent Roby. It's great to meet all of you in person. My name is Chris Woods. I'm a math teacher at the New Southwest Middle High and it's been a great opportunity. I just wanted to thank all of you for supporting that, for starting that and putting that effort into creating such a wonderful school. It was too bad we couldn't start the year, last year, right there, fresh with the school, but just even throughout the year. I mean, we saw the steps, we see that building a great school culture for those kids there is happening and it's going to continue to happen and I'm so excited for it. I moved here from the Upper Peninsula. In fact, Houghton, Michigan, I taught in Calumet for 20 years. But I jumped at this opportunity because I just wanted to work with these kids and I'm really excited about it. It was so incredible to finally get that information back in January that we could come back to the classroom, even in that hybrid opportunity. And then, like, my favorite day of the school year was getting that email from the board that said, "Next year, we're going to be all five days in class." And I was so excited about that. We finished the school year and I couldn't wait for the next school year to start. I'm ready, I'm excited for these kids because they need it. They really do. I mean, the amount of anxiety that our kids have faced today, and this is even from Psychology Today about 10 years ago, is that of a psychiatric patient of the 1950s. And that's 10 years ago, not even looking at what they face today and how much our world has changed in the past 10 years, in the past year and a half. I just ask and I just want to encourage all of you to really make a great decision for these kids. I mean, every decision that you make, number one, it comes down to these kids. I mean, the money, the finances, the buildings and everything is so important, but it really just comes down to those kids and what's best for those kids. And whatever you can do to help those kids, I'm just here as a teacher on behalf of myself. I just care about these kids and I want what's best for them. And it was just really hard to see... I was that shy, quiet kid when I was in school and I just know so many kids just felt so reluctant, so they just lacked that confidence to be able to speak up and ask questions and get inspired and excited about learning. It was so great to see that video. I loved it with all those kids' faces and jumping and exciting and I know that's not possible for every kid. It's really hard to hear the stories of the kids who have the different illnesses and things that make it tough and even the staff members too, but I just look forward to those days when things can kind of get back to normal. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you to all who came out this evening to give public comment. We appreciate you showing up. We'll move on to our superintendent's comments. Dr. Roby?
I want to give a special commendation to our summer graduates. This past Wednesday, we had an opportunity to celebrate our young scholars who still are the class of 2021. We expected to have between 18 and 20 and we had 23 that graduated and will still be part of our graduation count, so we're extremely excited for those young people. And we also are expecting a couple of more before our school year, our graduation year closes at the end of this month. But I wanted to make sure that we acknowledge them and for their perseverance because sometimes people get discouraged from the standpoint of they didn't graduate with their classmates, but these young people continue to kind of bear down and that shows that through all the things that may have happened over the last year or so, they felt that it was important enough to use their time wisely over the course of the summer. So I wanted to make sure that I certainly shared that with our board. And the excitement, you know, Mrs. Lewis had the opportunity to be the representative and, you know, the mortarboards with all of the decorations, it still was a fun event. And so I wanted to, again, congratulate those young people. That concludes my comments for this evening.
Dr. Roby? We'll move on to board member comments. Mr. Ross, you moved, so I'm going to have you go first. The end of the table there.
I don't know, I guess I'm just kind of processing the whole, you know, COVID mitigation strategies and I have plenty of thoughts, but I don't know if they're really formulated enough for any sufficient commentary, so I guess I'll just hold it in. Just say happy belated 50th to my colleague over there. It's yesterday's birthday and I'll just keep it light.
All right, thank you. Dr. Flores?
Yeah, I'm just excited too by the video and the campaign that we have to get students back. We certainly have some difficult decisions along the way, but I think we have a dynamic, very dedicated team that's going to follow the science. You know, last week, we lost a Hispanic leader in Francisco Pancho Vega. He was 99 years old and lived his life as a leader in this community and I think the whole community will feel that loss. He dedicated some time here with the Grand Rapids Public Schools, was a co-founder along with myself and others at the Hispanic Center, worked with the Mexican Fiesta and then the Hispanic Festival. Just a tremendous individual, great leadership, advised presidents, at least four presidents in the past on Hispanic issues. He was an entrepreneur, had a cemetery and a number of other things. Just a very rich background and leader and mentor and we have to respect our elders in an indigenous culture, but also in an American culture, we should be looking at people who have knowledge and who have age, who acquired certain experiences and have still a lot to share. Also, you know, I work and I live in the Barrio and we also lost a little young man that, I say not a little young man, but a young man who was a leader of one of the gangs and who I watched and tried to guide. Sometimes they don't always do the right things and they go off to college and another college and they learn and they come back into society. A young man named Arthur Caldwell. And just want to make that statement because while we have people who give great leadership and very positive things, we have other young kids that fall by the wayside and sometimes need to be mentored. And so our commitment to education has to go beyond the classroom, but in our neighborhoods. So just want to mention that while we look at a dichotomy of people who come and go.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Flores. Ms. Grant?
No comment.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes, I'd just like to echo what Superintendent Roby said because it was a really nice time to be there last week and you know how hard these kids worked. And seeing the parents and how excited they were for those kids, in some ways, it's even better than the regular graduations because you know how hard they had to work to do this. And so I was very proud of them and I was very happy to be there. So thank you, Ms. Shaki, for having me do that.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
I'd just like to comment, what you had said, Mary, really hit me. I hadn't really thought about that, but, you know, quite often we are phrasing things from the negative side and I think that will be important as educators and all staff in the buildings to really stay positive for our kiddos because we all have been through a lot. I have two kids, two of my own children were virtual all year last year and one did hybrid for half of the year. But I'm just finding at home, we have this like mixed excitement, anxiety, it's almost like we're starting over with the whole school thing this year of going back and there's worries and there's excitement and it's, you know, a lack of routine that's been in our household and so getting back into that. And there are a lot of questions. We, as a society as a whole, have had all of these questions and things change from day to day. And it was just really awesome to hear, I'm sorry I missed your name, but the teacher from Southwest. Yeah, so it's just awesome to hear. I know we have so many teachers like you that have remained positive through all of this and my kiddos are so lucky to have those teachers in their lives. So I just want to thank all the teachers and really all the staff members in the schools because we're all going through a lot of change right now. So let's just support each other in the community and support all the kids that are... This is a big transition, so.
Thank you. Dr. Baker?
First, I'd like to thank Dr. Flores for always letting us know when people pass. I think that marking people and I had the pleasure of getting to know Francisco Vega myself. And the last conversation I had with him, he thought I was at the community college instead of here and he was talking about how to get kids, how to get young people graduated from college. So he was definitely an advocate and his daughters contributed to Southwest Community Campus. So I also want to thank the educators' comments tonight and I, you know, appreciate that not children were survivors, so are their teachers and staff and certainly administration of getting through this year. And part of that is weighing the perspectives of what we need to do to keep children learning and safe. And we hear, I think that it's very important that everyone know that all of us are monitoring what employers are doing, what schools are doing, what other districts are doing, what we're all monitoring, those numbers of deaths. We all know the number of children that have died. We all talk about it and we don't take any of it lightly because we do care deeply and I think it's very important to know that. And it's also become clear to me that there's been no perfect decisions this last year, but there has been, I would say, perfect depth of effort to make the right decision because of our caring. And I just, I want to go back to, you know, the people responsible for that video. I actually forwarded that video on to Ferris Administration, said, "This is how we deal with enrollment issues. Let's remind people what school is all about and it's about celebrating life." So anyway, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Reverend Mathias?
Again, I really appreciate you mentioning Mr. Vega. Somos familia, you know, we're family and I hope that we can look around with each other. We're black, we're white, we're Hispanic, we're multiracial, we're bi-cultural, multilingual. All of that represents who we are as a community. And I hope that we're able to balance certainly research data in order to be able to both keep our kids safe and then be realistic and look at numbers, numbers of cases and so forth. Really appreciate our teachers, our administrators. Again, we have a unique opportunity with some of the Esser monies to really leap hopefully forward. And if we can all muscle together at the pull and actually leverage that as one people, man, we're going to leap forward. And so I really hope that we're able to hear each other, sit at the table, not discount left or right, but come to the center and figure out how we make our school district the best. I really appreciate that. Thanks.
Beautifully said. Ms. Williams?
I'd like to congratulate those 23 students that decided not to quit. It's easy when you have barriers, when you are overcoming just your own issue sometimes. So that they decided not to quit, that is awesome. And thanks to the staff who celebrated them the way they should have been celebrated for their efforts. Thank you so much.
Thank you, colleagues. So well said tonight. I will just end with a reminder to please find your way to the polls tomorrow. This is an important vote for Grand Rapids Public Schools. We appreciate you taking the time to make your way there. With that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.